This being has been. According to section three D of chapter two thirty-one of the public laws in nineteen seventy-five. Colin Nelson, sunshine all. Paul Newhart.
Here.
Is it Grace?
Here.
Judy Nelson?
Here.
Penchale?
Here.
Grace Anne Kelly? She'll be late. Phil Bell?
Here.
Robert Jiminski?
Here.
Is it Maderas?
Here.
Brad Nelson?
Here.
Brian West here. He actually called out. Steve DeRizzo?
Here.
Karen Kinsinski?
Yeah.
Tom Decker? Is out. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, in nomination under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the record show Grace. Is here. Grace, you're here?
I'm here, I think I am.
Thanks, sorry about that.
Okay, so. Nineteen meetings is going to be repeating our pre-work component. We're going to have Karen explain.
Okay, so in the midst of losing our secretary and the new year and the new organization and the publication requirements. It turned out that it was unclear as to whether or not the publication was done properly at the beginning of the year for each one of our meetings. Usually we do it once at the beginning of the year, the notice for all the meetings. It was unclear as to whether or not that was done. So we're just going to go back, add an infundus of caution, and we had a bunch of resolutions that we adopted that night. I don't think we need to have any discussion on any of them. Some of them, actually two of them are actually not applicable at this point. We can go through each one if anyone wants to have any additional discussion, that's fine. But essentially what we just need to do is vote again on adopting each one of these resolutions.
Or are the ones that we did before they now considered ineligible?
Yes.
Shannon, did you record in regular system?
Yes, I did.
And then we start this with seven forty?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We could do this pretty quick.
Yeah. When our first, when they come in, we'll pause. So tonight, we will be interviewing two individuals for secretary position. The piece of paper that are in front of you will be for your vote. First one will be seven forty P M. and the second one will be at eight twenty. Okay. Maybe we can have a discussion. And we will put it to vote. Don't want to let them know tomorrow whoever we choose. All right. So we have subcommittee appointments. On such committees, we have to make some changes. So we have. So Judy Nat unfortunately resigns the position due to health reasons. So anything that she was involved in, we won't need an extra person on. So we have major minor subdivisions. If Phil. Ryan. Brad and Steve. As far as those positions. Site plan. Bob Jiminski, Steve, Grace, and Judy, one individual for site plan. Okay. We have board interview. Grace. Paul and myself. I don't review. We have Judy was on that when need. Is it Maderas is on it, is it Grace is on it? Judy Nelson is on that and we need a fourth. Yeah, Paul? All right, so. They have. Yeah. All right, let's have our first interview. Jen? We got to do first? Yeah. Good evening. You're sitting in the first row now.
This seems.
That seems fair. All right, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you for the time. I really appreciate it.
Might just give us a high level? Walk by yourself?
Sure, sure. So thanks to Paul in heart for meeting with me, I guess last week, last Friday already. So my name is Jenny and I'm a resident here at Beverly County Township. But I applied for the position a while ago as I do have interest in starting a change in direction of my career into working for municipality. And so I figure I have to start somewhere and get my foot in the door and introduce myself and my interest in some of the skill sets and experiences that I could bring to a team. I have over twenty years of experience in managing healthcare, so it's very different than what I'm looking to pursue at this point. I've had a. Basically, a long history of my career in service in the military for eight years. And healthcare is a service sector. So I really do value and appreciate being able to serve a community, maybe a part of a community. And want to do something different than the healthcare that I've been doing for twenty plus years. So, you know, as I think about what I could bring to the table. I really do believe I have strong. Skill sets and experience, again, you know, managing healthcare for twenty plus years. And want to be able to use it differently. You know, when I, when I used to bring people onto my team and building a team, it was, you know, looking for the right person. Who could come and contribute, had the right patterns. Be able to contribute in a positive way. As long as you have that interest and you have passion to learn, you can excel and be successful in I think just about anything. So I know I don't come with municipal experience, but I'm very eager to learn and am committed to that process. So I'm hopeful for the opportunity.
Very good, all right. Please go ahead and have a question go around. Is that? You start off basically with a question?
Yeah, so Jenny, one of the key aspects of the planning board secretary job is meeting with citizens who have questions about the process. So, you know, you have to, you know, speak with these people. Sometimes they're a little irate, sometimes they're. So, I mean, do you have experience in dealing with people one-on-one?
So have you ever worked in healthcare? That's like all I did all day, every day, it seemed like sometimes. Healthcare is. It's changed drastically over these last couple of years, but it's always been a patient-focused and consumer industry. You know, patients are consumers and they have high expectations to receive what they expect for their care and from the team. So we often have patients that were upset for one reason or the other, you know, how they were spoken to, how they were dealt with, the bill that they received. Information that they did not get at their appointment, you know, it varied why they had upset patients, but. You had to manage the situation and de-escalate the situation and hopefully try to. Satisfy the patient and meet their expectations. And you have to listen and understand what that means because that's different for everybody. You don't want to appease somebody by assuming that you've got the answer for them. So you have to listen and figure out what it is that they're looking for and how you can help them. And then sometimes it's coming to a tongue-in-the-air as to what is. Appropriate and what you can be. So it's having this discussion and working with them, so. I enjoy that challenge. I enjoy people and, you know, being able to help people, so it's just figuring out how I can best do that.
Very good, thanks.
Yeah, sure.
All right, yes. Yes, so good knowledge that you're new to this type of work. I'm sure they would describe what you do. You have a vast experience dealing with. How are you going to, how do you transfer your experience into doing the job as you know?
Sure, sure. I had a lot of people on my team previously when working in healthcare and medical practice. You know, we have folks on our team that we would have to select, train, mentor, and then have them be able to meet the expectations of the job. So I'm very familiar with what, you know, that role looks like, whether it's in healthcare or if it's in an office setting or in a setting like this. You know, and working with them and often I would have to sit in at the front desk. You know, when you're working in an office and, you know, you don't have the staff that you need in order to be able to operate, you have to step in wherever necessary. So I'm comfortable in being able to, you know, switch roles and do what's needed. I really feel that if you have the right resources too, that you could tap into your resources to best understand, you know, how that role needs to be fulfilled. As long as you have the right resources and ask the right questions that are eager to do so, I think I'll be able to be successful in that way. You know, my strengths, interpersonal skills, professionalism, attention to detail, I think will all contribute to what this role needs. And I'm looking forward to being able to do that.
Steve?
Brad? So most of what's listed on your resume is more manager, director level. This is obviously more of a secretarial position. Now, not everyone missed their whole history, work history, but. Do you have experience working in a more hands-on, office, rather soft office type, you know, paperwork environment?
Yes, yeah, I mean, I mean, I haven't go back many moons, I don't want to say how old I am, but you know. My uncle, I worked for him when I was much younger in insurance and. He passed away a couple of years ago, but he always used to say it was the best secretary he ever had, you know? And so I always found that kind of amusing, you know, like, really? But that's, you know, very, very early on in my career. But again, you know, I'm a boots-on-the-ground type of person anyway. You know, as I've worked through my career and continue to take promotions and work my way up in my career. You still always had to be present, you still always have to be involved and in the leads when you needed to be. But still allowing folks to be independent and do the work that they needed to do, so. You know, can be very hands-on even at a director level. What it's needed, so.
No?
I had read the resume, I was just curious, maybe you was a kind of more involved with any groups that were with the cement company?
No.
I mean, people get attacked in town. I've been attacked just because of.
Yeah, 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 and I know there's a, you know, there's a sensitivity around subject matters as they're presented. You know, Paul had asked me how I felt about. Certain topics coming up again, whether it's the cement or it could be something else down the road. And I'm used to, again, professionalism, you know, I'm used to being in situations where you have to handle yourself appropriately and professionally. And, you know, healthcare, it's, it's privacy and, you know, HIPAA rules that you have to follow. So you just have to follow the rules and follow the law as it's, as it's, you know, meant to. And, you know, it's. You can't make or take anything personal. It's hard to do that at times, but you have to have a separation in any situation that you're in. So I'm very comfortable and confident to be able to do that successfully.
Yeah, it's just some people who announce their problems.
Drew?
I spoke to her on the phone a couple of weeks ago. Yes, I got to know her. First? Nothing wrong.
Paul?
I spent about an hour. Very impressive, no further questions. We did cover a lot of those kind of topics we went through. Kind of like those I was starting to talk about, we would request that whoever's hired go through training programs, both for planning board, professional side, and probably some of the same class that all of you took as planning board members, you know, are the process. Talked about some of the. Topics that may or may not come up in town in the future and how it happens, so. As I said, both candidates were brought to you because of the interview is going very well, so no further questions, but. Very impressive.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to ask is, is because of last, a couple of years ago. The discussion of a patient in front of us did take a lot of time. Do you have flexibility in the future if said situation reappears or we have. A different application? Is there flexibility in your schedule that would allow you to? To put more time into, into the capture business?
As needed, yeah. If there is flexibility with the hours that needed to be put in, I'm always willing to put in the extra work as needed. I currently am working as a substitute teacher at a public school. I did commit to working in their summer program, but it's a part-time program. So I am fine with putting in extra hours and giving extra time. As long as I can work around a previous commitment that I have already given myself to. But again, if there's flexibility in being able to come in the evening or spend extra time on the days that I'm here, absolutely.
When do you decide how many days a week?
So as of right now, it is Mondays and Fridays. Monday night meetings. And open for the public. But feedback, quite good feedback that somebody wants to see somebody in his office. So they will be, you know, right now. Where Paul's trying to cover some, some time within the tenships or Fridays right now.
Right now, we're trying to go for two for one with this position, I will say it's going to be, so one of the things that I was a stickler for, and I believe that, you know, previous leadership followed that, wasn't as critical during COVID. But I never want more, you know, less than two people in the building at any one time. So right now, because of the part-time nature of our staff, Mondays and Fridays only have two people. And so as summertime comes up, you end up with one person and then, you know, some of us, the committee tried to adopt to be up here or in the office, but this adds a third individual to be here on Monday, Friday. We are also interviewing for a constable administrator again, so that may change it too because that person then could potentially be here on those days. But for now, the way that we're planning issues of Monday through Friday, with Monday evening, it's a Saturday position, so. Well, it's right now, so if there's extra hours, we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah. Does that work with your special?
Mondays and Fridays. Monday may be a challenge just during the summer. So if there is any flexibility in that, in that Monday, I could work through that if you guys could work with me. But again, it's just a summer part-time program come August. I'm wide open.
About Monday nights?
Mondays, Monday nights.
What time would you be working at school?
It's, I would probably be able to get out of there, I'm thinking at two o'clock in the summer. So again, if you, you know, if afternoons, we're looking to have some coverage in the afternoons, I could certainly do that. But I guess come August, I know it's a little bit of a stretch until that point, but come August, I'm wide open, whatever the news on.
Is that, that's just for the summer, right, so it's just June and July, so. Right now, to get started, if you want.
It's actually really just July. Yeah, because they finish up the end of June, so five-week program.
So right now, substitute teaching, you wouldn't be able to be flexible to come in on Mondays?
The beauty of substitute teaching is you want to know when you're available. And if you're not available, you're not available. So up until June, I would have, that'd be wide open and then after, you know, August, mid-August, I would be wide open. So just really be for that five-week period. You know, I'm a person of memory, so I'm very committed to them and they're kind of building a program around it, so I, I would not feel right about backing out. They may be able to work with me a little bit if I needed to leave to touch early, but. It's hard to get people, so they can't run the program, they don't, they don't have staff.
Oh, as you can see, we work Monday nights, sometimes we. Not often, but sometimes late.
Yeah.
Ten, eleven o'clock is considered.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm not too far from here, so.
Okay. What, you were in the military for eight years?
Yeah.
What was your vice rank?
I was a sergeant, E5, yeah, I was a medic, so medical problem. It was a great experience and an honor to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you. Thanks.
Any questions? All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Special on the bylaws. We had no change. No changes, okay.
Well, I had mentioned way back, Kenny, about. In there, I think something about a person about how we may have to put it in. He said we have, we have to the next meeting. I can draft some amendments so you guys can look at it and see if you like that language. We're doing that in a lot of different places and, you know, now we also have this tool available to vote, so that's helpful too.
Okay.
So I could definitely do that for the next meeting.
So just so I understand, you're talking about allowing board members to, to zoom in?
Or if we had to go back to.
Oh, gradually, yeah.
Yeah, it was the wording that was, the wording ensued, the discussion ensued regarding who to worry for virtual meetings. It was agreed that this will be carried to the next meeting.
The way it's written, I think it assumes you're here in the building for.
Yeah, the meetings are in person, you're in the first, but.
I can make that change.
Attendance, have the option for.
One of those, I think, was on the bylaws, this is just. I see things like this, I think last year we made a deal for them, but there was no revision for that for last year.
And you're talking about the date for the revision?
Yeah, yeah, we revised some wording last year, but if you look at the current copy.
It doesn't have, does it, knowledge of? Just maybe like we do for what? Kind of draft. We'll do what we do in the where this is, we put it all in different condition case.
I think there's a bunch listed.
Is that right?
But it wasn't as if it modified since when you change your subject by laws, did they allow for number to be. Secretary? Really? It may not be recommended.
All right. So we got to go through that, so then we'll also do the twenty twenty-one applications, we're going to do that for next time to leave the list. So we'll draft the list, I'll go back through my files and see what I have. And then let's just start.
Yeah, now you need to go right down.
Right, yeah.
So all of them. Well, so our minutes don't have actual names of who made the motion and who's second.
I mean, we don't have to do the same, again, we're doing it over, if we want to follow the same, we can. It's like the new meeting.
Yes.
Exactly, exactly.
Another by the telephone.
Yeah, and if you want, absolutely. Nope, I want to have every other one down.
Okay.
So we need a nomination for chair. I'll nominate Ken Shalay.
I'll second.
Okay, so that was.
Any front nominations? All those in there? Against? Submissions?
West chair.
And make a motion to, how many, Grace Anne or Chair, right, West Chair?
Second.
For the nominees? All those there? You guys, submissions?
All right, so now let's go down the professional appointment, so we have resolution twenty twenty-two dash one, this was for the planner. Unfortunately, she's no longer available. And she has taken alternate employment with the county. So with summer study, actually, yeah. So we don't yet, as far as I believe, have anyone, so we'll just. Well, I did speak with, I forget the firm that she works for, but it was mentioned by Tom Dector. She did tell me she might be open to actually being our planner. At first, it would just be on a case-by-case basis, but she's like, well, we want to discuss appointing her. So I don't know how it moves forward with something like that, do we want to commit an interview or? Well, we do this, regardless of whether it's on intern or she has to be appointed anyway. Right, you know, authorize her to do it, authorize the bill and everything else. I mean, we got the inbox, tell everyone, yeah, but. Did you want to speak with?
She basically has suspended qualifications in her.
Right.
You know, her packet and. You know, her packet, and, um.
Now she's waiting for, we're in all that stuff.
I would say.
That's why I talked more about.
Yeah.
It's gotta go through the whole, so we have to leave, I mean, posted as far as our position, and see if there's any, anybody else.
So we should post it first.
Should be posted first.
Okay.
If you want to cover it, okay. All right, so I'll start that process, um.
Just thought I'd call out, I'm supposed to, actually, since you're here, I'll, uh, Chris is out today, tomorrow, can you repost the request for professional for, uh, both municipal and landwork plan?
Sure.
Same, same as the one we did back then. Oh, she's not invisible as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Also post that, so twenty twenty-two dash two resolution was for the appointment of the board engineer, um, Tom Decker. This was last time, and we had as a, uh, Bob made the motion, Jose Reyes made the second last time. Again, but there, there were two options, but we had Tom Decker.
Motion?
And Bob Montici, those were the two.
Yes.
Second. Any second, any further discussion? The motion is on Tom Decker, a Van Cleve engineer, correct?
Yeah.
Cause we had Bob first, and then those.
Well, he didn't say, you said yes, so.
Didn't remember what I had for dinner.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Abstentions?
All right, twenty twenty-two dash three, uh, was for board council. Jose, may I ask you a motion? Grace second.
Any motion?
I, I second for Karen.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Abstentions?
Yep, twenty twenty-two dash four was the newspaper.
Primary, either hundred county Democrat.
And Curry is an alternate. Grace made the motion, Jose Reyes made second.
Make a motion for the Democrat to be the first, uh, paper, and Karen Hughes second.
I should check the minute.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? Abstentions?
Okay, twenty twenty-two dash five was the meeting dates, uh, keeping them, you know, on the same schedule that we have now. My notes here said that we were gonna take out September twenty-sixth and October tenth, and December twenty-sixth.
Yes.
Second, fourth, Monday of each month, except for nine twenty-six, ten ten, and twelve twenty-six.
Uh, Jose Maderas made the motion, and Bob made second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in there? Against? Abstentions?
Twenty twenty-two dash six, this was the resolution that you all adopted in order to initiate me for secretary.
Is it, is it? Sorry, for the days?
Yeah.
So we changed our usual calendar this year to let the national or federal holiday for the twentieth, which is the, uh, so we're second, second for us, nevermind, I'm looking for the job here. But just in the future, they fall on a, on a Monday. Like, next year, it's probably fall.
Uh, twenty twenty-two dash six, uh, this was to advertise for the secretary position, even though obviously we're here at this point, let's redo the resolution. Grace, you made the motion, Jose, uh, Maderas, you seconded.
Make that motion to advertise the board secretary.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in there? Against?
And then we will have twenty twenty-two dash seven, and we're ready to make the motion tonight, if we do that, to extend an offer to one of the two candidates that will be here tonight, that will be twenty twenty-two.
All right, the resolution is Morgan. Uh, it's block forty-three, block fifteen point oh six.
I don't have the.
I don't have the name, so anyway, you can make it, so this was the Morgan.
Yeah.
Resolution.
Just provided it, yes, I'm gonna make the motion.
Is that the garage?
Yes.
This is, this is proving resolution, which we already.
Make a motion to approve the resolution on bar, the, Morgan, block forty-three, block fifteen oh six.
Morgan.
Block forty-three, block fifteen.
Second?
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in there?
Uh, no, we need an actual, because everybody can't go on that. So let's just go down, I don't have it in front of me, does everybody remember? And like the eligible solution.
Okay, Jose?
He voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we got Jose, like that. It just says all eligible board members voted yes.
I'm going to be honest. Great.
Yes. Everybody that is eligible voted yes.
Myself, yes.
Well.
It's famous.
I understand.
Yes. I'm sure I don't, again, start.
All right, let's say. Okay, that's done, and then the last one is just the septic. Um, this is the radio septic, one 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 zero one seventy-three, block thirteen, pound eleven. And this was a motion in the second to accept the recommendation of Tom Decker, uh, with regard to the septic approval.
Okay, so all members will be this. So, I need, uh, any motion? I'll make a motion.
No, you're, you're. Uh, no, it was, it was. This is Jen, yeah, oh, wait a minute, yeah, no, because we adopted it. No, we actually heard, yeah, public hearing in January, so you're okay, yeah.
So they made that motion, I'll second. I'll second it. Okay, any further discussion? All those in there?
Aye.
Next thing.
And we are up to speed, all of them. More legal.
More legal. Your office time. For twenty twenty-four, so it'll be Jose. And Grace. So.
No. Where are the minutes?
I think, Kenny, you have to, you have to be sworn in because you have the chair.
No, I don't think we have to read it, I.
Not just for that only, yeah.
Yeah, right, okay.
Grace, do you have the minutes? Oh, which, which January eleventh?
January tenth, sorry.
Yes. It's a change, right? There are two, there are two, right? And one would be reorganization, and then the.
Please, that was still the open office, other board members with expiring ten.
You have the, uh. Who was your chair, is I guess you're wrong?
So, yeah.
Here, here's twenty twenty-two. Would be, yeah, it's Jose Brad, um, Julie.
Yeah, there we go.
Bob, Julie.
No.
No.
No. Yeah, but that's, that's when it expires. So that's when it expires, so I can see. Let, let's, let me look at this.
I was gonna ask you a point, there was an issue with, I think the question that you come up with, there was an issue with Bill Bell's recording of his time, so.
Okay. His date was wrong.
His date was wrong. I think he, the page was off, yeah. There wasn't anyone.
You're much longer than you think.
There's a year thirty.
A lot of years.
He's got a lot of gray hair in this place.
All right, we'll, we'll finalize that, and, uh.
Are you saying it? You went all the way back? I found it, it was like five years. It's, yeah, we're back on track, I think this is Jose Reyes, and should be, Julian, I even guess. I know that. I think I'll interview, I think she's here. How long would it be to do it?
It's different depending on what class we're sure of.
Okay, what about class four? Class four three.
Not even really a question.
Three years. Three years.
That's right, yeah, it's every three years.
Let me see.
We're gonna do this a little bit differently, everyone's gonna say the oath.
Why not? This is done.
Then it's done.
Yeah, we gotta check their dates, though.
No, we're gonna definitely, we should wanna make sure.
I think they are direct.
Because I remember we were going through that, making sure everything was based on, yeah.
I think there aren't a lot of really questions.
Was still.
I think so, I remember, I remember back from like two thousand seventeen. So, I have a question on mine then, so won't reappoint me, I thought last year's class four. Yeah, it said they're expiring at the end of the year.
You were filling in, I think it was Jose's, so it's.
She's up there.
This is March, this is March, yeah. That's March twenty twenty-seven, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yes, you're here.
Yeah.
So you have the same questions that we are. Right, everyone, so let's just make sure. Let's make sure we have the same questions. I have them here, in case, uh, anybody isn't.
Good evening. All right. So this mom had been in the army.
Oh, I, those are very, I've had the general ones that you missed.
All right. All right, so can you introduce yourself and give us a high-level overview?
Hi, I'm Monica Chouette, I'm looking to be the land use secretary. Basically, my background is in executive as an assistant, project management, largely in the corporate arena. I've enjoyed fifteen plus years, um, focusing on bringing pharmaceuticals to market. I've used project management tools like MS Project, Microsoft Excel, I've used Word, all of the Microsoft suite. I really enjoy being a part of a team, and that's kind of the only thing to do is to be part of a team, something who makes an impact.
So part of the job is dealing with the public taxpayers who come in for questions, especially on procedure, for having to file an application, things like that, um, and sometimes you're not too happy, so. How would you deal with situations like that?
Oh, primarily, I would, um, however they feel has very little to do with, with me, and, and not taking them personally is, I think, the most important part. Um, and then pulling back on procedure, being able to give them the information, and if I don't have the information, knowing where to look for it, or where to send them to look for it. I've dealt with, dealt with doctors, I've dealt with patients, I've dealt with pharmaceutical people that are unhappy, whether it's, um, upper management or people looking for information, and especially having been an executive assistant to a president, I was a gatekeeper. So a lot of people didn't like the fact that I won't tell them what they want.
Okay. But no question.
Well, I wanna make sure we do ask the same questions, so. So, one of the questions was, uh, basically, based upon the fact you would be new to the land use field, um, after having worked pharmaceuticals before, um, how would you utilize your experience in pharmaceuticals with this new land use shop?
I find that, um, administrative work is administrative work, and if you bring the, um, the basic skills of people management, document management, and, um, interpersonal relationships, things transcend any industry. Um, and so, you know, the computer skills are the same, it's all the same, it's just being able to be open to learning new things, like the land use information.
See, you're supposed to change your photograph. Yeah, I don't know if my question is valid, based on her resume.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, because.
Let's get them out, I think you guys.
But I can ask, um, that's a silly question, then, based on. Well, I'll, I'll.
You wanna rephrase it? You want me to ask it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I can't think of a way to rephrase it.
That's okay, um, so you're, does your resume, for the extent that people haven't taken a look at it, um, show experience with secretarial and paperwork type of, uh, type of environment, like is that something you're comfortable doing?
I'm very comfortable, it's actually in my wheelhouse.
Thank you.
That's what I was trying to. We're about that, your resume, so.
You guys make me work. Oh, I know.
Um, you asked, what, whether or not she was on one side of the, or.
I got a feeling that you must. Okay, I have a question.
You're gonna ask the same question?
No.
I wanna ask.
I wanna ask a question, I don't, I don't.
You sure?
Yes.
Um, so you live in town?
I do.
Um, and were you involved, or have you been involved in any of the town or other Facebook or other groups that might relate to town business, board business, anything like that?
I have specifically not been involved, not even come to a meeting, you guys have never seen me.
I have flexibility with time, and how many hours? I hope it came from June, but it was in the, I think it is, yeah. I'm not sure where it came from, right?
All right, so.
I can answer.
Yeah.
Um, so right now, it looks like the hours and the days will be Monday and Fridays, uh, along with our Monday night meetings. Um, how long you, how's your flexibility with time? Uh, some applications can be a little longer, sometimes we go till, you know, ten, ten-thirty, sometimes we're out of here by quarter to eight. Um, but how, how are those hours, and how's your flexibility?
Or, I mean, I'm, I'm very flexible, um, my only concern about the Monday and Friday is that that's a long time for constituents to not have contact. And so I would, I would personally think that we should find some way that mid-week somebody could be in contact with. If somebody submits something late Monday afternoon or early Tuesday, then they don't talk to me till, you know, mid-morning Friday. And it's something that they needed for the. And it's something that they needed for the following Monday for a meeting. That, that, I'm, I'm concerned about that log jam, but my flexibility is open and I'm available to work that out. But that was my only concern with regard to that. So it was less about my flexibility and more about what I thought was best for the town.
I'm sure it's something I didn't ask any questions, cause we spent about an hour this week to fabulous candidates and you did amazingly well. And then so as we were here tonight to the planning board to make their final decision, we covered the same topics as far as being involved with, you know, the resident and whether this cases have may or may not come back. We covered some of the training issues too, so. Obviously, but there's, Monica interviewed extremely well and we're fortunate to have two. It's good choices to discuss, so.
Well, let's, let's do that when we talk about.
Okay. Thank you.
So I.
Yeah.
Why does everyone have the same question? I do a lot of, my company, it all depends on how the flow of the conversation went with resumes and stuff, I'm just curious.
Yeah, just for consistency. You know, I, I wanted to make sure that the same question was asked another day, if someone had another question, I had no problem with that. But just to make sure that we asked the same, or what we asked, if only asked the other, the exception of them. Yeah.
I will say, so Art, Art and I kept the questions the same, on our review, I usually go through kind of interview style too, based on the person, but. You know, my assessment, I'm gonna say of, of the situation is you have two managers from healthcare field with no land use experience. So they're very similar candidates and also because of the relationship experience or relationship existed, we wanna be as consistent as possible in how it happens. So I think Karen's just been proven.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
And like I said, we all imagined the same thing, not for any particular reasons, just to see that that was the most appropriate thing to do based on the candidates we represented.
Okay.
All right, so, Phil? I was just gonna say, she made a great point because I find this problem of mine is trying to get anything done on a Friday is. It's a loss. Yeah, people. Vacation day that.
I'm listening to the, to the, cause Ken and I talked about, just.
We're not, yeah, we're not into those days, but that's where.
So the only, it's. I agree with you.
Yeah.
But the, the thing is, is that what we're, what we're trying to do is make ourselves available to citizens who are gonna be the ones who are taking the time off early on a Friday to come in and do something that they have to do in town. So I think, I think being available on a Friday is a good thing.
Yeah, that, that's good, but if they have to make any calls, call anybody. I know some attorneys take love for it.
I don't know what you're talking about.
All professions need to be available over the end, this is every Friday. It's.
No. It matters, so.
Sometimes you just have a question. Fridays make me crazy.
I mean, yeah, the other, the other thing is that you have Mondays, the backup right after, basically, so. I mean, you have Friday and then the next Monday is, so it is a little bit bunched together, but.
So we're talking about those, we figure out where the admin falls until that'll change, so this.
Well, we definitely need Monday.
Well.
You know, the minutes, the prepare for the meeting, you need Monday. Friday. A little concerned about Friday. And the questions, discussion?
Are we discussing?
Yeah, my discussion is the.
It's better if I have. It's just general, I mean, both, both of them had pretty impressive resumes, but. And on which the background. Is. I wouldn't doubt that either one of them could probably do the job. But the question is, someone's gonna have to teach them. So it's a two-part number one, who will teach them and can they devote the time and how fast could we get them up to speed where they're, they're doing the job?
I, I know two people have, have done that. Got into this, my board secretary. And both of them got up to speed real quick and they're, both have great yawns.
I mean, the, the planning board secretary position with the public, dealing with them, basically it's just giving them the right forms for whatever it is that they're doing.
But you should know.
Right, yeah, it should be fairly explanatory and I think, you know, a, a couple of hours with Karen or, or with Ken should, should be able to get anybody up to speed as to, you know, would they come in for this, give them this, would they come in for that, give them that. And then, you know, over time, they'll develop. Yeah, and, you know, at first, you know, sometimes it's kind of helpful to say, you know, I don't know. Because sometimes you shouldn't say anything, you know, so it's, it's better, you know, sometimes it's better to just have somebody, here's your form and just leave it at that, no, you know.
And if you have questions, reach out to the board attorney or the board engineer, you know, here's all of our forms, here's a packet. You know, maybe that's something to think about, to give the entire packet of everything and then you bet it out.
Yeah. Yeah. You got no longer, you know, two-on-one interviews, both candidates have shared that they're comfortable, they, they, without being prompted, saying that they knew that they would need to go through other resources to get up to speed. So that's, you know, myself, Ken, and Ken and I talked about it, this can do a lot, can be a little more, I'm pretty comfortable. I have almost as much experience as they all lost, as, as Ken and Derek, I think, you know, out loud, I think it was needed. And again, they're gonna have to go through the, the training courses, just to make sure they're using the land use. Well, they've all committed, both were comfortable doing that, I asked them.
When, when is the next course for the, for the land use?
Then.
Cause really, that's the main thing, that they need to take that and then to really rise themselves with the, with the land use law. Yeah, I mean, I think that's, yeah, that, if you have a little blue book.
Sure, someone has one, that we can provide a little.
wisdom that's memorized. I know you will.
It is certainly ordered, yes, we do that.
Well, everybody, everybody has a little.
The secretary usually does.
I do, I know.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One is the little blue book. The little, the little land use law. Everybody, everyone who's been on the wall should have.
I have mine. Well, the new secretary and board, otherwise. Unless I get access to the check, someone, I'll put it through an order.
And mine is, I'm very nice, I think I had it all, what year you want, or.
Land insurance. Yeah, insurance about this day.
We'll get it.
It is, it's always a good idea to have that.
And to get, yeah.
You know, cause that's, there's a lot of things.
It's, it's, it's more the highlights of everything we do.
Yep.
Versus going into the actual MLUL, which, which can be challenging.
You've seen it in some of our hearings that we've had, we brought it and kept it by our desk, you know, when I'm taking. You know, so that a quick reference for our own self, Joe.
It describes how the planning board is formed, how the, the, you know, all the regulations.
The things you learn in the force.
Who should be a class four member, who should be a class three member, who should be a class one, class.
Invoting.
You know, voting, have a vote, whether or not you're gonna have a zoning board of adjustment or.
I'll take you a picture of one of those.
No. All right, so in front of everybody is a yellow sheet, little piece of paper. On that, of the two individuals tonight, Jenny and Monica, Jenny and Laura and Monica. Write one of those names and we will see who our secretary will be.
And Ken York.
Understanding.
Understanding.
I'm understanding.
Only once or salary.
You're gonna be a wife.
Why, why?
Kind of same.
Well, yeah, I understand that. Why would you?
Why are you answering the question?
He's very anxious tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's. Tell us how we can reach.
All right, one, two, three, four, Jennifer. One, two, three for Monica. So the motion, three, four, I might have a look. And one, two, I want somebody else to verify. While you're mincing, please verify. Count those chats, count those chats.
Board.
First, I count four. I count three for Monica.
Okay. I'll make a motion to. To, to verify. Point, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to appoint Jennifer Deace to as board secretary.
Second. Any further discussion? Oh, is it fair? I.
Yes, please.
All right, minutes.
So we have the November twenty second. All right, so November twenty second was announced, so.
I announced, yeah.
For yes.
We do, these are the next minute.
Yeah, cause I don't want everybody voting, I just say, oh, let's see who can vote. Unless we can do the, sorry.
Okay, so we have the when you swear and Karen's gonna do it right now.
So with everybody retroactive to the beginning of this meeting. Everybody repeat after me, I state my name. We solemnly swear that I faithfully and partially and justly perform all the duties of the office of planning board member to the best of my ability. And then I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And then I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. To the governments established in the United States. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Congratulations, everybody, to the extent that this was required. It's sounding great, right?
I should give you the hour, it's on a great channel.
Oh, wait.
Silence.
I've written myself so many stuff, I won't direct dates.
That's all right, we'll read.
Okay.
We'll figure that first.
Okay. So we do have an application that we're in front of us. Everybody, we're getting a complete copy, hard copy, we do have them, but we are locked down in the office currently.
Oh, my goodness.
So this will be for six old Kings Lane. This is for six old Kings Lane Bloomsbury. So we'll do a completeness review.
What's it for?
At next meeting is for a detached, I should say, a breezeway attached garage. To a house, so it was attached with a office and full pair for the second floor.
So.
Say that again?
It is a sound mission, or is it based on the second floor?
It is an attached bathroom. An attached garage.
With a breezeway garage.
So it's attached by a breezeway and it has, it has a setback there, it's like a floor that's got a setback, yeah. For completeness.
We should, we.
We got just said, no, it was in the height, it was in the height of the issue.
The height isn't finished.
I, I don't wanna talk about it too.
No, I'm sorry, I'm starting to get people paperwork. We can. If.
We can scan on it, you know.
Oh, sure, it's already there. We're supposed to have electronic documents. We've gone, but we have twenty sessions. Everyone has a set. And starting Monday, Jen should be in the office. Okay, so if everybody could make that, or we can always put copies with everybody's name in the mailbox outside.
Well, which is Wednesday, and I'll be up here this week, I can put it there.
So.
You could scan it for you.
Oh, we should have.
So you know what, why don't I do this? We can do that, but one minute, I don't have anything, so can you describe your attorney problems? Should be able to, if there's an attorney involved.
Can we pick it up?
Yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow.
I'd keep it, I'm trying to be up here late morning.
I'll be up here tomorrow.
Come on, do what, what, can we get in there?
Well, they're just gonna, they're just gonna, I can say you're gonna wait, of course, I do a phone call in the morning, they'll be up, but the office will open at eight thirty and then there, inside the front doors, there's a box, there's a big box, and there's a box, you just grab one set, you don't have to wait.
Okay, now just be, okay, if somebody happens to show up here tomorrow and you're the first person in that box, don't take the top copy. Because the first sheet is missing, cause I gave that to our CFOs that sent the Estero account. Just make sure you have the.
And just also Christine is off tomorrow, so Anita is our deputy clerk, so just explain to her where you are and what you're doing here.
I will get electronic copies too. I will get electronic copies too.
Yeah, so.
You don't need. So Tom already has. All right. Big motion to open the public.
Let's open the public.
Second, pause the paper. Do we have anybody from the public that has a question or comments? Teresa.
Hi, is this just the general public comment for the whole meeting, or is this specific to what you were?
No. General.
General, okay. So I guess I have a question about. The litigation case for Ms. Kozinski. So first, I thought you did a great job with the oral arguments, but. When I had attended the township committee meeting, the other attorney for the township. He stated that he believed that the case would probably be remanded back to the lower court. And he hoped that it would come back with instructions to bring it back to the planning board. Under the D one standard as opposed to the D two standard. So if it comes back under a D one, I think that means that the planning board's decision of abandonment would have been upheld. Could you explain a little bit more about the significance between the D one and D two designation in relation to the remand?
Yeah, in, in either case, so in, in the D one, you're correct, that's a standard use variance application, meaning that the finding of abandonment would be upheld. The D two would be an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use, which would mean that the abandonment was not upheld. And therefore their application would proceed as an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay, so everything has to go back, it, it's not gonna bounce all the way back to the planning board, it's gonna have to go to the lower court first, right?
Let, so, so let's hold on, first of all, everything is speculation at this point. While I don't necessarily disagree with counsel's characterization of this, I, I think in my experience that that hopefully is where it goes. And also more likely than not, these matters are sent back to the trial court by the appellate division as opposed to completely overturned by the appellate division. So, you know, if we are successful, then that is more likely than not what would happen. But again, it's totally speculation, we have no idea what's going to happen and on what terms. So the, the appeal was filed challenging certain actions of the trial court as being illegal essentially. So what, what the hopes would be is that it gets sent back to the trial court for them to review the matter under the proper standard. Under the proper standard of abandonment, which then requires the. Actions and inactions of all owners of the property to be taken into consideration. If you recall, specifically, specifically said that the board could not consider the actions of Lantini. And that the applicant sustained its burden in showing that the use was not abandoned. So I mean, that, that's again, only speculation, but that would be my thought, that if the appellate division does overturn it, then that's what it sends back to the trial court under those parameters.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And, and just to kind of update everybody, generally it's about six weeks for the court to give us a written opinion. We're coming up on that, I mean, they're not bound by six weeks, but usually it's somewhere around there.
With that, you're guessing that if you then send it back to lower.
That's, that's my thought, I guess.
After that, we don't. Time wise, I mean, time.
All right, any other questions, public questions? All right, seeing no other. Public questions, the motion to close the public, motion to adjourn to the public, second. And, oh, is it fair? I. Yes, questions? All right, Mr. Mayor, any?
No, I attended a meeting with the major water authority that they're on reviewing some watershed protection measures, so they may not attack us as a planning board, so next. They're gonna come up and meet with us in person two weeks, and so I've updated that a, an opening meeting with all the towns that were mishap, that was already that. Watershed area, that's the largest. Area within that watershed, so there may be something that's there to try to, as we've seen, you know, harmful algae wounds and other issues may affect what we do. But I feel like nothing else is matched by a new year, but with that, I'll turn it over to committee report to.
Yes, so I met with the Highlands a few weeks ago, and subject of the grant money, and I had updated the board a couple of meetings ago that we were gonna try and. Reengage with the Highlands and get the grant money out there. One of the questions that came up during the meeting, there's two, but the first one was about the master plan. There might be some availability of grants for the review of the Highlands portion of the, of the master plan and the E R I. Although Judy Thornton is under the impression that we've already done that and we're up to date on that, so there's a little bit of confusion as to where we actually, yeah. The environmental.
Yeah.
I'm both, she said both.
The environmental resources.
Resource.
Inventory.
Right.
And we did that.
That was that long ago.
Yeah, that was, that was fairly recent, but the master plan, I don't think was reviewed.
Okay, because then she must have been the same, she, she specifically told me in a follow-up call that she felt we were the.
On the E R I.
No, on master plan.
The reevaluation, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, we're doing, we're doing an update, or we're doing a complete reevaluation? Or we're just doing an update?
No, I have to do an update.
That's what I thought, okay. Because that would be the follow-up.
I mean, unless we're really.
Nothing to change.
Change, yeah, yeah.
Right.
It needs to be reviewed under that standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I mean, the follow-up part, but that's still gonna be a piece of it then. Okay, because that's what I was speaking with my possible plan.
A complete review of a master plan can be very expensive. So I, I don't know, this is the year to be doing something like that.
Definitely not.
Okay.
So if we don't have a planner.
Oh, that's why the grant cycles go, they follow state, not ours, so if, if we can figure out.
No, go ahead, you start.
If we can find a planner in time, I mean, for some days to review grants if we need to, I mean. We can try to get them in before July, but the reality is you probably won't be applying for grants for the following year, starting July one out.
Isn't Tom also?
Tom is a planner, we had this discussion of the committee meeting, so, but he's primarily an engineer, so he can serve as a planner, but when we get into some of the actual planning, he would.
But I mean, in the meantime, he is our, right now, he is our acting planner, so we're not.
Right, but, but I think I said I spoke to a Lingus this morning, and she did seem willing to work with us and go through the processes and, you know, whether it's permanent planner or she's just on a per diem, per project basis. We can work that out. So, so that's, that's getting going, which is good, I was getting a little nervous about that. Second thing, I, you know, have to bring this up, out of the meeting with the Highlands regarding the tree ordinance. Judy had strongly suggested, because what the state is focusing on is everything on state lands. If our ordinance is focusing more on private property, she strongly suggests we go out and move ahead. With our own ordinance, that she doesn't believe it would be overruled by everything the state puts in the place. And that is kind of, I, I've watched those videos. And everything in those videos talks about at the local level, it's municipal owned lands, not privately owned lands. Most of the wooded municipal are, are actually at the county level, you've got Jump Town Mountain, that Tower Hill, which is all county. So I'm, we can take this up at another meeting, but she strongly suggests we move forward with ours.
And I'm just kind of the. When we knew, with the New Jersey Water Authority brought up to them our tree ordinance and some like terms. About their government, which is a different issue, but that plays into that, just a little more resources to talk about that as a maybe second or separate ordinance. I think it's moving to two weeks from our beginning.
Don't we have a power?
I think the issue that using Tom Becker as our planner is that he's a very expensive planner, that he would pay an engineer fees for that, right?
I know, but the main income. If we need a planner.
And we have, we have to work out on rates.
That you are required to plan for.
Right.
The revalue, yes, but that could be both.
Both reasonable.
Not revalue, but reexamine the master plan.
Yeah. But it will get an updated E R I from the. From the Environmental Commission.
We have not, we haven't been in environmental commission numbers, so I think that would be eager.
Say it to jump on.
I mean, because, yeah, even though it's up to date, I mean, it certainly wouldn't hurt to. To get it, you know, reviewed, because.
I think it would be more, it would be an actual hurt, but.
I, I think we did preserve some plans since then, right?
Yes, yeah.
Eric, what else?
I have a question, the, the seventy eight twenty two coalition. The study that's coming out, how is that gonna affect the township's ordinances versus the home occupation ordinance and things of that nature? Do we need to make changes of none of that?
We're not, we're not bound to it, it's like getting a planner for free, essentially the county is granted. T and M Associates, which is a planning firm, to work with all the towns on the seventy twenty two coalition. And so this came out with the pandemic, because the traditional economic development, especially in Hunter County, like. Is probably not what we're gonna see, some more people are going out here and working from home. And we're one of the few municipalities that, you know, the planning board should be recognized for doing that, having a home occupation ordinance in place. And actually, they reviewed ours as a template before we had started. So no, we're not anybody bound by it, but it's nice to get that input at no cost to our taxpayers.
That was back with Mayor Woodhouse.
Yes. Yeah. There were a lot of discussions about what was appropriate, what wasn't, and so some of that will probably come back up, will be interesting, there's probably some new. You know, even then, we were discussing, there were some new jobs and new things that people would be doing. The idea is, when you look at economic development for Hunter County, there were before, pre, I say pre pandemic. They were targeting high income technology jobs, but they were visiting them in office settings. Not a typical office park, but probably smaller office settings, and now they're probably envisioning those as, as a home occupation, whether it's working remote, there may, may not be an actual licensed occupation. But still. Bringing in the high income earners to the area as part of an economic development package theoretically, that enhancing home values and spending those dollars here in the county.
So that then roll into, now that you have these high income. People, you need more restaurants or better restaurants, like, is that kind of what?
It's kind of, that's the intent of it, now that, but those would be geared towards most likely the, the already developed centers, so I mean, I don't think we have the, much opportunity. There's some in Bethlehem, but like, looking at like Clinton or Flemington or Laverhill or Frenchtown. But some things Judy and I spoke to Highlands about back in two thousand eighteen. We had reserved some funding to do an economic development study for Montever Tre, so they were gonna plan revisiting that and finding out what's appropriate for that. The challenge for Montever Tre is mostly pre-existing before our ordinance, as I believe our, our ordinance book came to fruition in nineteen fifty nine. And probably just about every property on there has some sort of mixed or dual use that existed before nineteen fifty nine, and so they're all. They are quite varied, they have, pre-existing non-conforming, and then I would say and or very inconsistent uses, so. I think it's an opportunity for us to look at that, to one, bring those properties into performance. And then also look for any potential opportunities that we might have as a tax base.
I think it'd be a good time also for the, us to review our home occupation ordinance. There are a few things there that may be dated. We should look at it.
I agree, again, I think maybe we'll get the study back, and then we can, we can look at what their recommendations are. Discuss ours. But yeah, again, we're not bound by it.
I think, yeah, one seventy three, I don't know, it's going on us, the campground, is that? Seems like a lot of trees were recently cut down, is that, I don't think, or, I think where's our company? They, G P U right away, they're around us.
It's a pipeline office there, too.
Oh, is that one?
It's a pipeline. Yeah. Going in or it's, it's there. The pipeline's already there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I just noticed tonight, if you could see, it's other end of the campground than there ever used to be. Right, and I didn't know if that was a campground, like, expanding, or that was just clearing up right away, basically.
Leaves haven't been that heavy either. Leaves haven't been that heavy either.
Yeah, but I mean, compared to the last time I drove over the hill, when there were no leaves.
The campground can't expand, they're bound by the framework resolution. And so when they're licensing it every year, it actually should be on our next.
In its.
Count of the, the Arizona, which will goes out, and talking about kind of, I say anthrax, kind of, the, the camping spaces, I think are appropriate, but it's funny that they're bound to counter inventory, because they're limited to. Certain truck bed caps, which I don't like, many people buy bed caps anymore, but they have to count the bed caps, they have to count trailers, and they're limited from.
Trailers on the front hall.
I know, and some trail, from, from, I think nineteen ninety one was there.
Yeah. Are they ever renewed every year?
The campgrounds are renewed every year, well, part of it is the, the count was kind of a concession from zoning, but the campground are actually a, a ward health review, that's a license that's issued, so. We need to get more enough to tell us that they passed board health, and that's up the tax, maybe to approve the license every year.
Do they have any gypsies?
And I don't, yes.
Yeah, that's part of what, they have an gypsies part. New Jersey.
Yeah.
Sensitive in their own water treatment.
New Jersey is part of environmental protection. So it's for, if you use a certain amount of, of volume of water. Do these for, for bars, stuff.
I don't need two, but on them, and I believe Hop Hop as well, I don't know what they do. I think this is Hop Hop.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Something interesting, I learned, I forget what radio, it was either NPR or CBS, what California's doing, maybe it's lead with the environment, why you're working. With the water, but because of climate change, what there is, is this helicopter that can go, it's maybe a hundred feet up, but it has an ultrasound, kind of like what we think of M R I or ultrasound would do. And going to the ground and picks up water from groundwater from so, oh, my goodness, I forget the exact measurement down into the soil. They, they said they're doing all of California, because, my goodness gracious, if you've ever been to California, and I was a few times, every time there's a drought of some sort that's going on. It was back in the eighties and it still continues now, so they're doing that to tap, yeah, to tap groundwater, because water is the big issue around the world right now. So I thought that was very interesting, that a helicopter could actually grab that, send it down and beam, you know, beams up the information to the helicopter, so they'll have, they'll be able to track groundwater across the whole state.
But that was gonna find them.
But they got to.
Yeah.
Gypsies, New Jersey pollutant discharge elimination. I was gonna bother you all night. I always forget what that stands for.
All right, so, and then the, the only other communication that had been, I guess, floating around was the. Board of Ed and the closing of Hop Hop School. From, from the whispers I've heard that's been abandoned.
You mean, they're not gonna close?
No. That's the last school board meeting, they told me, they, they moved sixth grade to top line two years ago, during the pandemic. And they're down next year, they're moving the sixth grade back to Hop Hop, so that's something there. Now we have an interim superintendent who's saying that that is not an indication that they may or may not close, but I think it makes it harder to, to sell for three grades in there, but again, I think it's, I think any official decision would wait until there's a new superintendent in place.
Does that mean, probably it's not gonna expand, because aren't they gonna expand?
They were supposed to come before us, and it's kept hanging off.
Yeah, the N G A always in touch with us the worst times, and actually, we've, we have paid money into these conversations with the school, so.
Spun around for a year and a half.
Well, they really wanted, they, they've been pushing, they, they started pushing in November, I guess, November, December, January, and they said first meeting February, so we're putting it off for the. So, we're putting it off for the year, here we are, so.
That's already in the school board.
To the school board, so.
Just a new school board and a new B A, and interim superintendent, so, so.
Work, yeah.
A little bit more.
Yeah.
The trouble, we're gonna run it back on the planning board, and so I was approached by, um, one of our local residents slash realtors interested in turning the yellow house on one seventy-three, on the, um, seventy-eight side, into a group home. Uh, over fifty, um, group home.
Someone told me by Turkey.
So the question was, is, yeah, is any?
Probably not something that would be allowed.
Yeah, so.
Right, because I don't, so I don't wanna have, like, board discussion about it, or maybe because that would stop them from being able to come here.
Yeah, so the main question she had was whether or not we allow any residential on one seventy-three anymore.
I mean, she can talk to me, talk to the board engineer, and then walk through the ordinance, like I said, but then I don't wanna talk about it, since ships are coming, then we can't do it.
This is the issue too, with some trees, even though we have zones and zoning, uh, there's so many pre-existing non-conformers up and down there, uh, unfamiliar with the property mentioned, uh, so I think, uh, the discussion, yeah.
Have you talked about the one right by Kirkman?
No, it's on the other side, so it's just up from the, um, from the, uh, picture. Almost, okay, it's al- it's almost across from the, um,
Oh.
And, and tell me Karen, I'm getting to approach the, the edge here.
Sorry, I'll let you tell me exactly where it is.
No, I'm on, I'm on, so.
It's, yeah, it's almost across from where that guy put in the, the.
Last place.
The, the, the stone.
Anderson, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know what you're talking about, yeah, I know.
Anybody else coming in?
Karen? I'll ask one more question, so speaking of the stone place.
Oh, no.
That may be, that may be coming in, though.
No.
That's what I was asking.
He asked you.
Now, it's already, yeah, that's in other people's hands.
How about, I'm saying, how about the burnt down house with the dogs?
That's in somebody else's hands, too.
Yeah, it's very important that we study one seventy-three.
You can keep on going. But. So.
Is that where it's, go?
Look.
And what? What did you do there?
That, I didn't think you'd, never.
He didn't wanna take my job, being. As a matter of.